Move on to item A five, which is the Police Department presentation. And we have a report from Chief Reichel.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and Marina Valley residents. Tonight, I would like to go over the contracted services provided by the Riverside County Sheriff's Office, the challenges we face based on the limited resources, and how we can do better moving forward into the future. Riverside County Sheriff's Office and the City of Marina Valley entered into a contract for law enforcement service services in 1985. For the past thirty-eight years, Riverside County Sheriff's Office has provided basic law enforcement services, collision investigation, and many other specialized services to the City of Marina Valley residents. Currently, the City of Marina Valley contracts with the Sheriff's Office for one hundred fifty-eight sworn deputies and fifty-two classified employees for a total of two hundred and ten employees. These deputies are spread amongst four divisions within the station, and each division is managed by a sheriff's lieutenant. Four divisions within the Marina Valley Sheriff's Station are the patrol, special enforcement teams, investigations, and administration. In this slide, you can see how we allocate your resources. Eighty-four percent of your contracted assets are deployed towards proactive law enforcement, with a majority of them dedicated to patrol. The Patrol Division, which is the foundation of every police department, is divided into three overlapping watches and supported by our traffic and CBAT teams. The three watches are our Watch One, which goes from six P M. to six A M., our Watch Two, which goes from five A M. to five P M., and our Watch Three, which goes from two P M. to two A M. The current contracted rate provides for eight deputies, one corporal, and one sergeant for each watch. However, based upon current staffing, each platoon varies generally, is generally staffed with about nine to ten deputies. Our patrol deputies conduct proactive routine patrols, they enforce state laws and city ordinance, investigate crimes, and arrest offenders. They respond to calls for service, natural disasters, and emergency situations. They solve community problems by implementing the zone policing model. Our traffic deputies investigate traffic collisions, minor and major, enforce California vehicle code, and education of cellphone and pedestrian safety. They focus on commercial enforcement, truck routes, parking, and school zone enforcement. And then we have our CBAT team, which is our Community Behavioral Health Assessment Team. It's a collaboration between the city, the county, which provides the deputy, and RUHS, which provides a clinician. They respond to threats of suicide, psychotic episodes, mental health emergencies, and support patrol. Not all cities have CBAT teams, and currently Marina Valley contracts for three. Although currently we have deputies available to work this team, RUHS is working to recruit and retain clinicians. RUHS has been struggling with recruiting and retention of clinicians. Challenges include qualified workforce and ability, past background, and working in a law enforcement environment rather than a controlled treatment facility. Next, we have our special enforcement teams, which consist of twenty-six deputies. Our set or special enforcement teams includes special operations based on specific law enforcement needs. Our set teams are broken up into the following categories. We have our CCAT and gang team. The gang team is proactive, a proactive unit specializing in diminishing gang activity within Marina Valley. The gang team conducts probation and parole compliance checks, gang-related search warrants, investigations into gang violence and crime, and gang registration and presentations. CCAT, or Career Criminal Apprehension Team, is part of the gang team. CCAT is responsible for monitoring and suppression of crime committed by criminals on post-release community services, or what you commonly hear as P C R S. Probation, parole, career criminals, and career criminals. They accomplish their goals by conducting surveillance sweeps and other proactive activity. CCAT also works with corrections and probation officials to accomplish their goals. We have our R B S, R B S T team, or robbery burglary suppression team. The robbery burglary suppression team is a supportive unit designed to take primary investigative responsibilities for burglaries and robberies occurring in the City of Marina Valley. We have our POP team, which is the problem-oriented policing team that handles continuous and ongoing problems not easily handled by a patrol officer. Patrol officer has to respond to numerous calls for service, sometimes even two or three calls for service at the same location. Patrol officers do not have the time or resources to find out the underlying reason or problem that creates the numerous small problems. The POP team uses various resources in an effort to help solve the ongoing continuous problems occurring on a daily basis. The POP team is a team that implements different plans of action outside the normal paradigm of patrol officers to solve a problem as a whole. This plan is, this plan of action helps to remove or lessen a problem from any given area to alleviate continuous ongoing problems from patrol resources. And lastly, we have our homeless outreach team. The Marina Valley Sheriff's Station's homeless outreach team, or HOT team, is committed to assisting the community with issues related to homeless through education and outreach. They address issues surrounding the quality of life encampments, and make assessments of housing, substance abuse, and behavioral health needs through a collaborative effort with city staff, local county agencies, and nonprofit partners. By utilizing the proactive outreach, the support through resources in hopes of reducing the rate of recidivism, incarceration, and calls for service related to homeless. We have an investigative division, which consists of one lieutenant, two sergeants, eleven investigators, three deputies, and two C S Os. The investigators generally work eight to five P M. The investigative division is responsible for following up on major felony crimes, high-profile crimes, investigating sexual offenses, investigating crimes against children, investigating misdemeanors cases with special circumstances. Lastly, we have our administrative, administrative division. It's comprised of the chief of police, a sheriff's captain, and a sheriff's lieutenant. The sheriff's captain is responsible for the overall administration of the police department to include all items related to planning, organizing, directing, staffing, coordinating, reporting, budgeting, and discipline. The sheriff's lieutenant assists the captain in managing the operation of the station and directly oversees the administrative processes at the station. These include our business office, records accounting, logistics, fleet, and community services. So our current resources, the current fiscal twenty twenty, twenty twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-three adopted budget is fifty-three point nine million. This includes four additional patrol deputies and three additional motor deputies from a previous fiscal year. Additionally, the Sheriff's Office has migrated to a technology solution to help improve services and keep costs for contract cities low. The city has been able to support this effort by providing funding for citywide and flock cameras. Or we can look at where we are going. We need to look to understand where we have been. Beginning in two thousand and eleven, the city began cutting deputy positions from the sheriff's contract. To date, we are down twenty-eight deputy positions from our numbers in two thousand and ten. Additionally, outside forces have had impacts on crime and the operation of the criminal justice system. These impacts have created additional processes, procedures, and paperwork a deputy needs to accomplish every time an arrest is made or subject is contacted in the field. As the city was downsizing its police force, the state was increasing a deputy's workload. Beginning with AB one oh nine in two thousand and eleven, there's been a reduction in the average prison population from a high of nearly one hundred and seventy-five thousand inmates to one hundred and seven thousand inmates today. With that decrease have come changes in victimization and reported crimes. Statewide statistics are through the roof. Following AB one, AB one oh nine, Prop forty-seven, known as the Safe in Neighborhood Schools Act, was passed overwhelmingly by the voters in two thousand and fourteen. Prop fourteen created new misdemeanors and reclassified several felony theft offenses and misdemeanors. Prop forty-seven also allowed for the resentencing and release of anyone incarcerated under the old statutes. Then, in two thousand and sixteen, Prop fifty-seven was passed by the voters. Prop fifty-seven, the so-called Public Safety and Rehabilitation Act, was designed to reduce the length of sentences for individuals serving time for violent crimes committed during California's Get Tough on Crime era of the nineteen ninety's. It allows for the release of inmates deemed by C D C R to be suitable through, suitable through a variety of criteria. Where in the past, individuals serving sentences for violent crimes were required to serve at least eighty-five percent of the time served before they would be eligible for early release, C D C R's new rules allow for early release at just fifty percent of time served. C D C R reports that under Prop fifty-seven guidelines, in two thousand and eighteen, they released nearly eleven hundred felons, another one thousand one hundred and eighty-four in two thousand and nineteen, another twelve hundred and twelve in twenty twenty, fourteen hundred in twenty twenty-one, for a total of four thousand nine hundred and seventy-eight early releases. Reality, in two thousand and twenty-three, decarceration and decriminalization, decriminalization in order to prevent so-called mass incarceration has left California and Marina Valley with a new reality, that a mass victimization through increasing crime and the collective trauma of absence of public safety and confidence in our institutions. Let's look at where we are now. Population in Marina Valley has increased by twelve point three percent in the last thirteen years. However, sworn deputies have decreased by fifteen percent. Thanks to the city council, we have added four patrol deputies this fiscal year, and we will add eight more over the next two years. That is a big help, and we cannot understate the value of the personnel to the city. But we are still challenged by a growing population, increased development, and federal and state policies that promote lawlessness and increase the workload of our deputies. Even with eight additional deputies over the next two years, we will be at eleven percent decrease from our twenty, twenty-ten numbers. That's twenty-eight thousand eight hundred and twenty-three more people in the city with twenty less sworn deputies. Our industry standard, which is one per one thousand, would be two hundred and seventeen sworn deputies. We are fifty-one bodies below ideal. Looking into the future, a build-out goal of a population of three hundred thousand, we would need one hundred and forty-two additional sworn deputies to accommodate. How does the contracted staffing level impact the citizens of Marina Valley? Let's take a look. Our calls for service in two thousand and twenty-two, what we see here is an average of three hundred and sixty calls for service a day, and our response times and availability for proactive patrols are not that great. How do we know this? Let's take a look at two thousand and ten, when we had twenty-eight additional deputies in service. Remember, council began cutting deputy positions in two thousand and eleven. You can see the impact those cuts have had on the level of service provided. Calls for service have not changed much from two thousand and ten to twenty-two, but our ability to get there has. Look at the two slides together. Our priority one response times have increased by two minutes. Our priority two response times have increased by twenty minutes. Our priority three response times have increased by over an hour, and our priority four response times are up by an hour and nine minutes. If you think this is bad, let's look at the cuts, the policy changes have impacted on our violent crime rates in the city of Marina Valley. Since two thousand and ten, we have seen a steady increase in violent crime in our community. In this slide, you can see how having fewer deputies, slower response times, increased population, and the impacts of the state legislative policy affects violent crime rate in the city of Marina Valley. Without enough resources to keep up with the population, development, and legislative policy, we are not meeting standards, and we are putting our public at risk. The current metric used evaluating the number of deputies needed is one to one thousand ratio. Given the size of Marina Valley and the population density, this is an industry standard we should strive to meet. When we compare ourselves with neighboring cities, you can see how understaffed, underfunded our department is. We are underperforming by standard ratio and by peer, and by peer comparisons, and our response times and violent crime are the direct reflection of this. Bottom line, our city operates with deficient resources and our residents suffer. At this level, we cannot do anything about the negative impacts of certain public policies, but we can meet deficiencies with adequate resources, and we have options to help. Technology is truly the key to increasing departments' effectiveness as we continue to fight, fight and reduce crime with limited resources. Technology multiplies a deputy's ability to perform their primary functions, which are to investigate crime, prevent crime, and regulate traffic, regulate traffic, and arrest offenders. With too few deputies, we need cutting-edge technology to give us the edge on the criminals. In addition to technology, I cannot express enough that we need additional staffing. A large and growing body of academic literature confirms that police presence deters crime and helps maintain public order. Currently, our staffing numbers struggle to meet the needs of the community. Additional, adding additional deputies is something the community needs ASAP. The current metric used, again, is evaluating the need, one to one thousand ratio. We need to add fifty-nine deputies to hit that mark today. Looking into the future, our projected build-out population, we will need, need to add one hundred and forty-two additional deputies. In addition to our staffing and technology needs, we need to upgrade and maintain our facility. Our current facility is over twenty-five years old and designed for a different era of policing. Currently, our building needs immediate upgrades to accommodate for additional women in the workforce, as well as an upgraded evidence collection, processing, and storage area to meet current safety standards and to protect, to protect our staff. To mitigate the immediate need for a new building, our main investigation work area needs to be redesigned to create additional workstations. Phase one through three conversions are in the existing C I P plans to expand the current facility to accommodate personnel and services as the city grows. We could hold off for a few years from doing these projects if our immediate needs are met, but the reality is, we have outgrown the station. Southeast, the southeast Marina Valley Public Safety Joint Use Station is the collaboration between police and fire to use existing land purchase for the Redlands, Bordea Fire Station. This would be limited use for law enforcement while, while a full-use facility for fire. This would aid in providing better service to the east side of the city. So, in a nutshell, too many Californians have felt the collective trauma in the absence of public safety. We hear it time and again in the public comment portion of our council meetings and our social media comments. Our community members are upset with the lawlessness, the lawlessness occurring in our city, yet the direction from council is minimal to increase public safety. It's past time to quit talking about the problem and implement real solutions that will prevent the citizens of Marina Valley from becoming victims. We're the second-largest city in Riverside County and amongst the top twenty in the state. With a growing city population and development, our public safety division needs to grow with it. My recommendations, Council, are take advantage of the technology as a force multiplier and employ it quickly, and steadily, and we need to steadily increase the number of deputies to achieve the national standard of one to one thousand, which currently is fifty-nine deputies we need to add. And we need to improve the existing building now through design change and building upgrades, and begin planning the construction and financing of future improvements for the facilities. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chief. Appreciate that report. We will go ahead and move into council discussion. Any comments, any questions? Feel free to hit your speaker button here. We see here Mayor Protem Delgado.
So Chief, just to, is it fair to say that these are not wants? These are needs to provide public safety to our residents of Marina Valley, the second-largest city in the county of Riverside?
Yes, sir. We need to, we need to make these additions soon.
And then the cities that, excuse me, that you compared, the one to one thousand ratio, Fontana, or Fontana, Riverside, and San Bernardino are like-sized? I mean, Riverside has quite a few more, but their ratio, they have quite a few more residents, but their ratio is, is well above the one per one thousand. Fontana is just scratching the, right, right there at point nine three, and then San Bernardino exceeds that one to one thousand. To get to that, we need to provide you and the station resources to increase that staff, right?
Yes, sir.
And I know, so here's, here's the kicker is, you get the fire guy is going next, the chief's gonna talk about his needs, right? And we just heard the two billion dollar need to expand and grow our city. So we're all fighting for the same pot. But you look back, and I'm not slighting the build-out for sure, because that's what, we're gonna grow, and that's gonna happen. It's, it's a need that we have, but to provide public safety, both fire and police, is, it should be a priority, and it should take precedent over a lot of the wants in our city, because you, like you said, these are not wants, these are needs to provide public safety to our residents. So I just wanted to clarify that these are not wants, these are actual needs to get us to a point where we need to be comparable to other cities the same size as us.
Yes, sir. I think our response times kind of show that we need these, and we need this soon. Additionally, the violent crime, the aggravated assaults are through the roof compared to where we were with, when we had those additional twenty-eight deputies. I think if we want to make the community safer, these are things that we need to prioritize.
And more deputies equals faster response times, deterrent just by a show of force, presence, officer presence, all that, all that combined is, will bring that, that down.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Are there any further council comments or questions? I just wanted to share a few, a few comments and ask a couple of questions as well, Chief. Thank you again for that presentation. It's always good to see, especially statistics, you know, look at the data, and appreciate you sharing some of that here with us, so we can better understand the issue and then better plan for solutions on how to move forward and address these, these issues, which in this particular case is public safety and addressing crime, violent crime, property crime, and making the city safer. So one, one of the questions, and it's come up before, and this is more in the wheelhouse of Mayor Protem and yourself and your troops, is volunteer sheriff's deputies. I believe we have an existing program, and the Sheriff's Department has that existing program, but do you have any suggestions, or there may be any opportunities for the city to, to do more in terms of trying to get residents, whether they're retired, or maybe they're just willing and able to give their time to volunteer as a volunteer sheriff's deputy, to possibly assist with some of it? It's not, it's not the solution to all of our problems, but it could help in some ways. So is that, is that something that we might be able to do more of in terms of outreach and getting folks to volunteer?
Volunteers are only helpful in certain instances. You, in order to effect arrest or deter crime, you need to be a sworn deputy. We do have a reserve program, but you must, you must complete an academy to be part of that. So the volunteers could assist with traffic control and minor issues, but the issues that I pointed out tonight would not be impacted at all by increasing our volunteer forces.
Thank you, thank you. So yeah, hopefully, well, that's something we can have a separate discussion on to see what more the city we could do to, to get folks into that, because it will help in some, some capacity. So the next one, like one of the issues that has been identified, we see the, the increase in response times, right? It's heading in the wrong direction, unfortunately, and one of the possible solutions is to get more boots on the ground, hire more deputies. So that brings me to my question, which is the hiring process itself, and being able to actually bring people in to the public safety careers. And so if, maybe you could share a little bit of, I guess, how that is going, and maybe any trends that we're seeing, because there's a lot of competition out there, you know, in terms of different industries, different, different sectors, and people maybe choosing other careers instead of going into public safety. So is there anything that we might be able to do to address that, if there's any issues in hiring officers and getting folks to come into the academy?
So one of the, one of the good things you have is you contract with the Sheriff's Office, and we currently have a very popular sheriff, and we are, we are being sought out regularly for, by bilateral employees to come here. We currently have four basic academies held every year. Prior to coming to Marina Valley, I worked in our personnel, personnel department or division, and we were putting about seventy-five thousand new recruits, or seventy-five new recruits through each academy. So we are hiring like crazy. The Sheriff's Department is a sought-after police department, or police agency for employment. So we are able to get people through the process and get people hired relatively quickly and out in the field. So if you authorize more additional, additional deputies, we could probably have them in the field fairly quickly.
Got it, thank you. And yeah, I was gonna ask about some of the data related to violent crime and property crime, and you did have a slide on that, so I appreciate you sharing that, and I would be interested, and this is a separate conversation as well, to dive even more into that data. For example, looking at the increase in violent crime, diving deeper to identify different variables or factors, right? For example, if there is an increase like we see in violent crime, are there particular, you know, maybe, is it, is it more young people that are committing these crimes, like, to kind of go more into the detail, right? So that would better help us to, to address that, right? If there is a particular need with a certain group of people, that we can allocate resources to, to address those situations. So, you know, we, we won't dive into that today, but that could be helpful for us as well to see those additional statistics and that data. So when we're making decisions, you know, we can better decide where to put that money and where to allocate it. The flock safety cameras, that's one thing that you mentioned as well, and that's one of the things I worked on with the previous council and some of the current council members to actually approve and put in place, and I see them everywhere, which is great. Personally, I'm a big proponent and advocate of technology in general, and in this particular case with public safety, technology can be beneficial in various ways, one of them being reducing risk to life, right? Using technology to assist in public safety personnel's efforts and reducing people actually being in situations where they could get hurt or lose their life. That could include things like drones, or artificial intelligence, flock safety cameras, for example. So with flock safety cameras, how is that going so far? I think it's been in place now for maybe about a year or so, but is there anything you could share with us as far as how successful that the, the system is? And, because we get the daily reports, and I actually am glad to see that almost every day, there's something about a flock safety hit, that something came up on the flock safety system, and we were able to apprehend a criminal or return property to its rightful owner. So can you share with us anything about how that flock safety system is going so far?
It's a, it's a very good asset to the department. We're very thankful for it, and we appreciate the support in that venture, so thank you.
And lastly, yeah, just appreciate your, your report once again. Thank you for sharing that with us, and, you know, ultimately, kind of like my colleagues mentioned as well, that one of the biggest roadblocks to get anything done is always funding. It comes down to money. So, you know, moving forward, it's trying to find that fine balance of how we address public safety issues, how we address crime, while at the same time funding, you know, our fire personnel and public safety, and that's, that's the, that's the trillion-dollar question that we all have to constantly try to figure out, who's gonna get how much and how big a piece of the pie. So, you know, moving forward, we have to keep both the, the issues that are happening now, today and now, and how we address those, and then also thinking long-term and how we can be proactive and making sure that we're doing everything we can to, to ensure that there are less criminals and less criminal activity in the future. So that's, that's all the comments that I have for today. I do see here a request to speak from Council member David Marquez.
Thank you, Mayor. Chief, let's touch on the reserve programs. Several years ago, I brought that up, and there was not really no interest in it because of the financing. Is it still, the individual who wants to be a reserve still has to go through the academy, post certificate, but he doesn't spend that many hours as a regular officer would? Is that correct?
There are three types, level one, level two, and level three reserves. There's, what you want is a level one reserve out that can go out in the field by, by themselves that could act like an actual deputy, unsupervised, and available to actually handle calls for service and make arrests. Because it's a reserve program, it's not their full-time job or full-time duty, and they're, it's a volunteer-type program, not, we see very little interest in reserves.
What, what's the cost? If someone was interested in, in that program, does the department finance with uniforms, weapons, their equipment, or does that individual have to provide their own?
So just like with, with anything, they would, they would have to provide their own training, because they're not hired? So they would put themselves through their own, the academy, and they would have to have the, the post certificate, they have to acquire that on their own. We would provide them with a uniform and the, the, the safety belts and such, so they would be equipped if they were interested, but they would have to, they would have to provide, provide themselves with their initial training.
And the level two, I know you had touched on the level one. They work by themselves, they can, they do basically what a regular police officer would do. Level two, can you touch on that, what, what their duties would be?
I believe they, they have to work supervised by a, or as a partner deputy with a sworn officer.
With a sworn, not with another reserve?
Not with another reserve, no.
Okay, and, and level three is?
I don't know, I don't recall, I don't know the exact duties, but it's gonna be the lowest of, of the three, so they're gonna have very minimal interaction in the field. Again, again, all of these things require, the, what, the, the issues that we wanted to impact, which is violent crime and being a proactive deputy, you would, the only one that would have any impact on, on those, those issues would be a level one, because that would be the same level as a full-time officer.
Okay, and it's basically like a part-time job?
For free.
But they don't get paid, right?
Correct.
They just do it on, as a volunteer, or?
Yes.
Wow.
They have to, they're required to have They have to, they're required to have so many hours per pay period or per quarter, and oftentimes we see retirees, they'll turn in their full-time badge or whatever, and then they'll just request to be a, a, a reserve deputy.
Reserve deputy, yeah.
But to get a, a lot of work out of them, it's very rare because they're retired and they just come to work and they fulfill that basic.
They feel safety with that, that a uniform still on and a badge.
But we do see it, I mean, we do, we do see them do it, but.
That's something that would help out in the city if we had a reserve program or the sheriff would, level ones, I think that would be a very beneficiary to the, to the city.
We, we do have a reserve program, it is available, and again, it's just not highly sought, it's not a highly sought-after volunteer piece. Again, you're going to have to, number one, invest a lot of money in, into the program and get the training initially, and then number two, you're going to have to come out and do the, the work of a, a sworn deputy on your free time. So it's just one of those, those volunteer programs that's just not sought out by the community members.
And does that help a level one if he wants to go full-time? That, that does help if he applies for a full-time deputy job, but he does have to go back to the academy, correct?
Correct, but I, I, at, at this current moment, if someone would like a full-time deputy job, they're available.
Okay, thank you.
And just to, to add on, I'm, I'm, I'll get right next to you, I'll get to you next, Councilmember Bernard, but to, to add on to Councilmember Marquez's comments, I was just wondering, and just the idea came to my mind, with the reservists, right, with the volunteer sheriff's deputies, possibly looking at doing some kind of, I guess you could call it a stipend type of approach, just trying to think of different ways to incentivize people to actually go into the volunteer program and see, see if maybe that, that makes any kind of difference. And I know ideally, we would have sworn deputies that are armed and patrolling our streets, but just thinking of different, different ways that we could possibly get level one reservists to, to actually step up and become reservists. So just, just a thought, just an idea that came to my mind right now of something that might help. Councilmember Bernard.
Chief, I know we're having a lot of discussion right now about actually hiring deputies, but the one missing component we have yet to discuss is where we're going to put these deputies, correct? So another issue we have is the capacity of being able to house them because deputies like social workers at some point have to enter the actual report, right? Am I correct, Mr. De, okay. So we also have an issue of we need to find a place to house them because you guys are out of space over there, and at the time when it was built, there weren't as many female deputies also, correct? So that's another issue with spacing in, in your locker room area?
Ye- yes, ma'am.
Okay, and so we're also discussing not just the ability to be able to hire, but we also need a place to put people so that they're able to change in and out as well as have time to do their paperwork. Can you tell us how long on average, if we were talking about an assault, which is seems to be our highest, how long would it take for them to write up a report on, on an assault on average? How many, how many hours would that take a deputy out of the field?
So on, on average, a call, an assault call for service, you would, you would have your initial response, which would take an, an investigation at the scene. So that would take anywhere from thirty, thirty to a minute to an hour. You would bring that, that, that person back to the station where you'd have to complete a probable cause statement and a, and a booking sheet, and then typically, if you're involved in, in assault, where you fought with another individual, you would require some sort of medical clearance from a hospital. So then you would have to take them to RUHS to get them okay, what we refer to as an okay to book. They'd be seen by hospital staff, get cleared to be booked into a facility. So we're, now we're driving from the west side of the city to the east side of the city, and we're about two hours into the call, may, maybe two and a half, three hours, and now we, that before we even get to drive all the way into downtown Riverside where we can book them into the facility. So just on a simple assault risk, which you said, which you saw doubled for us, we can spend anywhere from three to four hours. So if we get in a, if we get in an assault, that deputy is taken out of the field to do paperwork and booking and processing from anywhere from three to four hours.
Thank you, I just wanted to give an example of not just the spacing, but how long we're talking about a deputy being out of the field to write a report. And so we have to think of some of those things when we're talking about staffing levels also, that, you know, at any point, technically based on those numbers, we could only be at half-staff of whatever's out in the field.
And this is a big change, again, in, 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 in policy from the state. As, as we were, as, as, as things have progressed in the future and technology and different things, and different issues have been pushed down and legislated upon us, it's just increased the workload on that deputy. So we're, we're, we're working differently than we did previous years because of all this, the extra stuff we have to do.
If I may add to, the, the deputy did all that four hours later, he, he has to physically write the report, then comes four, six months later is the court time. So he has to, he's had to follow up with court, and then that takes him off the street because he has a court date, so just it's.
Real quick, Chief, do we have jailers here that only do the booking or transportation? Or is that? CSOs do that?
So typically, we, we try to have our CSOs do that. Again, CSOs are being overtasked with things. If you noticed, we only had, I believe we had fifty-one or fifty-eight, I don't, I don't recall the number off the top of my head, but in comparison to our, our, our neighboring areas, they're, they're close to a hundred classified staff. So as we have one or two that are, that are doing those transports for us or taking them to the hospital, we're, we're making multiple arrests and needing, needing to do multiple transports. So at some point, we're just out, we, we just don't have them, so a deputy has to do the job.
So if you were to hire, or we were to hire more CSOs, Brian, that would, that would help the, the officer within the booking and the time he spends in the station after an arrest. So would you say that, that would be very helpful, hiring some more CSOs?
Are you asking me or are you asking the chief?
Asking the chief, well, yeah, when it comes to money, I always have to bring your name up.
I, I will say from a funding perspective, we have increased the CSOs almost every budgetary biennial cycle, typically by about four CSOs. Obviously, when you take a look at CSOs compared to sworn deputies, they are of a cheaper classification. But again, based on what we're trying to handle here, I'm going to defer to the chief to see if the CSOs would actually alleviate some of his concerns.
Absolutely. CSOs can handle a, a large number of things, not just the transports and the booking process, but they also have, can handle priority three and priority four calls, past burglaries, things of that nature that tie up our, our traffic accidents, traffic control. If you, if you, if you, if you think about this, so we have a major traffic accident at one of our intersections, one deputy can't handle that call, so we, we have to close down the roadways and we have these, these, these six-lane, you know, highways running through our city. So we, sometimes it can take anywhere from four to five deputies to control that intersection and manage that scene while we're waiting for tow trucks and making sure everyone's safe because that, you know, you remember the days, Councilman Marquez, where you're out there, those, those, those cars don't stop you when you're doing traffic control. So we, we need the staff out there to do that. So now we're tied up and we have these big accidents, we have them regularly, we have the big streets, we have the big trucks, all of these things are, are complicated in our, in our investigation, they just require staff. So adding CSOs help because they can do the traffic control and that, that will keep your deputies available for priority one calls for service, but it's a balance and we need, we need to look at that balance amongst all the other things we have in the city.
And do you bring other resources and CSOs from other jurisdictions to help or just Moreno Valley?
Well, we only, we only bring in what we, what we contract for. So the city contracts for a certain amount of hours, we provide, we provide that, those, those services and whatever, whatever, whatever hours are available, we ensure we have staff here. So if there's, if we're short on hours, we'll bring in people from other areas, other stations, but, but not typically.
And Councilmember, I'd just like to remind you and council that based on previous budgetary conversations about CSO, that they do not equate to the one per one thousand residents. CSOs are non-sworn, so they would not be part of that particular calculation. So if the national average is one and, and council's desire is to get to one, CSOs would not get us there.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, is there any further council discussion or any questions? We're seeing none, we'll go ahead and move to our last item on the agenda, which is item A six, that's the Fire Department presentation, and we have a report from our Fire Chief, Jesse Park.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, council and staff. Thank you for letting me present this current service and planning report. As you know, we have seven stations, seven engines, a ladder truck and two squads. We run an average of sixty-eight calls per day and our current insurance rating is at a three. The calls are broken down on the left, but I think it's easier to look at the pie chart in the middle. We ran over twenty-two thousand calls last year, about eighty-five percent of them were medical aides. Our average response time is four point nine minutes and we met the national fire standard sixty-five percent of the time. We did not meet the standard thirty-five percent of the time. Within the Fire Department is prevention, which does the extremely important job of inspecting and permitting, OEM, which includes our EOC volunteers, emergency training and recovery. We do this with a hundred and six personnel total, three in fire administration, including myself, eleven in prevention, five in OEM, and eighty-seven firefighters, including our two battalion chiefs. The administration and emergency management is city, fire prevention is county staff, and the operations is CAL FIRE staff. I project it will cost twenty-seven million dollars to run the Fire Department this year. Most of that cost is due to salaries in operations. Is this enough? Is ten pieces of equipment and eighty-seven firefighters enough to serve the community right now? It is not. This chart shows our stations and the calls they ran last year, and if you'll focus on the Station sixty-five column, you will see that Engine sixty-five ran almost four thousand calls last year. If you look further down, you will see that that means that the engine company was committed to a call almost fourteen hours every day. Please orient yourself to the map. Station sixty-five is on Indian and JFK. All the stars with parentheses are stations already built and those without the ones we will need in the future. So now let me bring these calls in that occurred last year in sixty-five's area. If Engine sixty-five is committed fourteen hours a day, someone else has to take one of these calls. Who does that? Another one of our fire engines. We always respond to a call, we never say no. The problem is all of our stations are busy running their own calls, so we're not able to fully serve the community right now. This affects our insurance rating and our ability to meet the national standard. Fire departments are guided by standards and ratings, mainly NFPA and ISO. The NFPA standard is to get a piece of equipment on scene within four minutes, ninety percent of the time, and within eight minutes for ladder trucks. Part of our insurance rates, rates are based on whether we have an engine within one point five miles of residences and a truck within two point five miles of buildings three stories or greater, or with a needed fire flow of thirty-five hundred gallons per minute. Last year, we could only meet the NFPA standard sixty-five percent of the time. So here's the calls in the entire city. And now I'll bring in our four-minute response areas. And now I'm going to pull out the calls there so you could see the gaps in coverage that we have, especially in the southeast. So that's how far each one of our fire engines can travel from their station within four minutes. More striking is our gap in ladder truck service. This polygon shows how far our truck can drive in seven minutes, which does not meet the needs of the city both on NFPA standards and ISO ratings. We need to get back to at least three trucks again. As a reminder, we had three trucks up until two thousand and ten, but due to the recession, we could not afford to keep them. But the recession did not stop the increasing need to serve our community. We increase on average fifteen percent every five years, and if we continue this trend, we'll be closing in on forty thousand calls by the time the city is built out. So here is the easy way to look at this. In two thousand and twenty, we had twenty thousand calls. In two thousand and thirty, we should be around thirty thousand calls, and in two thousand and forty, we'll be at about forty thousand. In other words, when we double our calls, we need to double our service. So right now, we have ten pieces of fire apparatus running calls and we need to add five pieces right now. We need to catch up to serve the community, but it'll take time. It takes about two years to build fire engines and about two years to build fire stations. So by two thousand and thirty, we need to have fifteen, and by two thousand and forty, we should have at least twenty pieces of equipment and a few new stations to cover the entire city. Another consequence of being busy is the need to adjust the responder's schedule. So currently, our firefighters are still on the old forestry, seventy-two hour shift, while almost everybody else is working a forty-eight, as you can see, San Bernardino, Riverside, Ontario. As you get busier, you have to decrease the shift for safety. So LA is on twenty-fourths and New York is so busy, they run eight-hour shifts. The department and the firefighters' union knows this, and so upcoming contracts are addressing the problem. The new contract plans on increasing staffing from two point six-six full-time equivalencies to three point zero and moving to a forty-eight hour shift. This will increase wages and our budget, but also overtime will be reduced to help control some of these costs. And hopefully, this will help recruitment and retention. There's a nationwide firefighter shortage and it has been difficult to hire and keep quality people. Emergency service is not cheap. The fully burdened costs continue to go up with inflation and insurance. It costs about one point five million to staff a squad each year, and it is more expensive to staff the larger pieces of equipment. This chart shows the cost to purchase new equipment, and there are many options, but I've highlighted the ones we currently have now. As you can see, a new ladder truck or tiller costs about two million dollars and takes about two years to build. Costs about twenty-two point five million to build a new station with all the associated fees and about half that to do a large renovation. This shows the estimated cost to build all the fire stations the city will need. It would cost over a hundred and forty-five million in today's dollars. So outlined here is a realistic plan with costs to get us on track to two thousand and forty. This includes renovating a station, building a new one in the southeast as a joint public safety station, and staffing five more pieces of equipment by two thousand and thirty. Then moving forward, continuing to add staffing stations and apparatus into two thousand and forty. Is this realistic? I mean, is this plan appropriate? Well, if we look to our neighbor to the west, you'll see that Riverside City is already where we'll need to be near build-out. They're already running forty thousand calls a year, using fourteen stations with over two hundred firefighters on more than twenty-five pieces of equipment and a budget of seventy million. We will need to be very close to that if we continue to grow the way that we expect. Now, as the county and our neighbors grow and increase their fire service, by being part of the county and CAL FIRE system, we may be able to adjust. But overall, if we double our call volume, we should plan to double our services. Thank you, that's the end of report and I'm available for any questions.